America, God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Ah-ho. 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 Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Ah-ho. 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 For the record, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of legislative chambers. Also, there is an electronic defibrillator in the back in case anybody needs that. Also note, if you have any cell phones, could you please silence them or turn them off? With that, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to know for the record to everybody, there is a issue going on with the board here. There is a chirp. If that chirp gets too annoying, the clerk knows we may go to manual voting and not electronic voting. So if it gets to that point, just be aware. With that, we will go to the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Letter A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, July 10th, 2018. Item B, Call for Meeting Set Tuesday, July 31st, 2018. As a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board?
Will be approval of any?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Pressing the button.
All right. Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item C, Citizens' Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items that are not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none. We'll move on to Resolutions. We have Item D, E, F, G, and H. What's the will of the board?
Move the approval of item resolutions from D through H.
It's a motion by Commissioner Duda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Seeing no questions, please vote.
All present voting yes.
Presentations, item I, Three-Year Plan of Assessments. Mr. Goodwill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. Let me start by saying, I'm not sure this isn't a little bit of a misnomer. We, assessment offices are obliged to file a three-year plan of assessment every year with their county board. It isn't meant, or at least we don't feel it's a big sort of presentation item. I'm not sure there was another place to put it. And the purpose of the report is to basically say to county board members from an assessment office, you know, this is what's on our radar screen. And so with that, it's informational. I hope you find it useful. I suspect as we get a little further along in the year, closer to preliminary value time, we may find it useful to sit down with you folks like we did last year in sort of state-of-the-market, smaller meetings. But nonetheless, these are the things that are on our radar screen at this point.
Any questions to Mr. Goodwill? Chris works.
Well, could you just give us a snapshot of what they are?
Well, almost everything we're going to end up doing is going to be driven by the behaviors of thousands of buyers and sellers in the market. And just recently, there have been, there was a lengthy article in the World Herald about home price, sale prices not slowing down. There also was kind of an interesting research paper, or at least synopsis, done by the Federal Reserve Bank in Kansas City regarding Nebraska's housing market and specifically Douglas County. So I would anticipate in a lot of neighborhoods, because sales prices continue to appreciate, we're going to have to look fairly hard at where they stand in relation to our level of value target of between 92 and 100. If you recall, we finished last year on the low end of that 92 to 100 scale. I think our overall was just a smidge under 93. I think we had a couple of, I think we had market areas mostly around 93. The way those numbers work, Commissioner, is if sales continue to appreciate and you start at the low end of the range, it doesn't take long for you to suddenly be out of the range. So there will be neighborhoods that we are going to have to look at from a reappraisal standpoint for next year. What we're trying to do is further, narrow down maybe isn't the term I want, but we're trying to sort of further focus in on those areas that need adjusting so that those that don't can be more or less left alone. The way this works is, let's say your overall value, the overall selling prices in a market appreciate four or five percent. What that means is some neighborhoods will be less, but some neighborhoods will be more. And the focus of our energies with respect to residential, it would be to narrow down who we're looking at for reappraisal to those that have the, sort of the greatest rates of appreciation.
So when are you able to bring, like, say you have your, now there's 17 market areas?
Yes, ma'am.
Seventeen. Are you able to bring the map that shows what percentage they're in currently as we move forward with what we would be doing?
Later on, I think we could, but we aren't even finished, the state sales period on which we're measured, that study period doesn't even conclude until this fall. So anything I say as of January, July 24th of 2018, you know, the hay isn't all in the barn yet, I guess. So at some point, yeah, that was for you, Commissioner. The goats aren't in the barn. Yeah. I guess the point is, we have to do it this time of year because the law says so, but, you know, obviously, we're not in any shape to project final numbers for, or even preliminary numbers for 2019.
So your plan for the next three years basically is to just watch the market?
Depends on what buyers and sellers.
Okay. And that's about it?
Well, pretty much. I mean, when they, when they scratch out that check, they're certainly, they're certainly rendering an opinion about value.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Mr. Goodwill, I'm just looking at the three-year plan of assessment here, and on the first page, you kind of have a countywide total of where we are now, and then it looks like a breakout per market area, and there are 17 market areas.
Sure.
Okay. That's a snapshot of right now, correct?
The 2018 values, yes.
Okay. So in order to comply with the state regulation of you've got to be between 92 and 100% of valuation, these numbers need to add up to an average of between 92 and 100, or they all need to be between 92 and 100?
No. The way we are measured in mass appraisal is for every arm's length sale, there is an assessment sales ratio, assessed value divided by selling price, okay? And we are measured on what the median ratio is, half above, half below. So it's not an average. There are some quantitative statistics as well that measure how close your ratios cluster around that median, and smaller is better. But essentially, if you have, if you have 501 sales in one of your market areas, you will be measured based on the median ratio with half above and half below.
Okay.
And that median needs to be between 92 and 100 for these kinds of groupings.
Right. And if I understand these figures correctly, countywide, we're at 93.21%.
Yes.
Okay. And that, broken out into the 17 market areas, shows all of them save one at 92, 93, or 94% plus it.
Sure. All at the bottom end of the range. And even the first one market area, one that finished at 91 and a half, they, those get rounded up. So for, for sort of official record-keeping purposes, we're treated as if it's at 92.
So these percentages are generated by your office, or they're generated by the state, or where do they come from?
Well, both offices will, will review all of the arm's length sales of residential property that occur in Douglas County. So for example, when we get the Form 521s, the real estate transfer statements, our staff will follow up with those, to review those, and sometimes call parties to the sale to be sure they understand whether that's an arm's length sale that can be used in a ratio study, or whether it's something where, that is going, has some characteristics in the transaction that will skew the sales price and make it something less than useful. And so we provide those sales to the state, I think, on a quarterly basis.
Now going forward, this covers 1920 and 21, right?
Yeah.
Are we going to do anything significantly different in those three years than we're doing now?
In a county our size, well, but what do you mean by significantly different? I mean, there are different classes, there, for example, in commercial that are going to have to be reappraised periodically. They aren't all going to happen at once. Similarly, for these market areas or neighborhoods within the market areas, they will be appraised, reappraised at different times depending on what we're seeing in terms of sales in the marketplace. But a lot of what we do is pretty much ongoing. We have an ongoing obligation, for example, to inspect, physically inspect every property in Douglas County on a six-year basis. That's in excess of 30,000 parcels a year. So that's kind of an ongoing pursuit. The, the performance of the preliminary meetings that we have at the end of January and throughout the month of February, that's ongoing, and that doesn't go anywhere. The work we do with respect to providing the referees that you folks hire to review county board protests, we try and provide them some data about the parcels involved. It saves them from having to do that kind of research, and quite frankly, it cuts down their hourly bill to you folks. That's ongoing, and we spend a lot of time in June and July doing those things. In the fall, our pickup work with new construction and building permits, that's ongoing, that happens every year. And that's just on the, you know, we focused here on the, on the appraisal of real property side, you know, what the rest of the office is doing, you know, sort of an annual thing too, the, the review of personal property returns, the review of homestead exemptions, the review of, of what we call permissive exemptions or governmental exemptions, depending on who owns them, the properties. Those are ongoing things that we do every year as well. These are, these are where we, this is what is on our radar screen and where we anticipate going, but I would add one big caveat, and that's this, Commissioner. The market really will push us in whatever direction we end up going. So for example, I think there were some types of commercial properties that looked like candidates for reappraisal. If some, if we notice, for example, that, that sales of some type of commercial property that isn't on the list are, are going for, for much higher prices and our, our numbers are looking skewed on those, that may bump that up with a bullet, as they say. So I'm not quite sure how to answer the question. A lot of this is ongoing because of our obligation to try and achieve market value for residential and commercial property.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I guess one of the things that I've seen, and I don't know if it was last year or the year before, was the expansion of the market areas from some number, say nine or 10, to the current 17.
Yes.
That was a significant change from.
Yes.
I guess I'm talking about, is there anything like that in the mix?
Well, I think what we're trying to do, even within these market areas, is refine our approach to value, because none of these market areas are monolithic. They're all made up of smaller neighborhoods within that market area. And so if we can analyze those to be sure that the neighborhoods that are appreciating most rapidly are getting the reappraisal attention, and the ones that are reappraising less rapidly, we can expend our energy, we don't necessarily need to expend as much energy on. The other thing that we've noticed over the years is there are sometimes, in some of these areas, there are small subdivisions, I mean, really small. And if they don't have any sales for a number of years, they're really difficult to analyze, you know, what's been happening there. And so I know our appraisers are looking at ways to find a better method of determining what the value in those small subdivisions ought to be. In fact, I think they may be sort of combining some of them, not, they don't have the power to say, this subdivision automatically combines with this one, but for internal valuation and measurement purposes, I think they're looking at, trying to find ways to group like with like so that we give everybody a fair look.
And, you know, that's good. I think that moving to more market areas is a step in that direction too, to kind of get a more representative valuation on a smaller area than we previously had on a larger one. Just one last question. You bring up a real good point about the values are driven by the market. And so just in 2018, if you could briefly tell us, what was the market increase, decrease, or stay the same in residential property in Douglas County and in commercial property in Douglas County?
Well, as we stand here, I don't have a particular number for commercial. And part of the reason I don't have it is because the study period doesn't conclude, you know, until the end of September, first part of October. So it's a little bit premature. There's a little bit larger sampling in residential, and although we are, we are somewhat, we're short a quarter, as it stands now, at least, sales prices have appreciated overall about 4% more this year than last year. Now, I would, I would, I would caution you just a little bit on that. As I'm sure you're aware, you know, an overall, an overall number is made up of lots of smaller ones, some bigger, some smaller. And so, you know, if I stand here and say, well, sales are up 4%, I don't want everybody on the board or everybody that's, that's in the audience or, or those folks that are, you know, watching this on the channel Commissioner Kraft is always promoting. You know, I don't want them to get the sense of, well, gee, you know, 4% is what it's going to be, because they might live in a neighborhood where the sales are up 10 or 12%. Or a neighborhood where they're not up nearly as much as 4%.
And maybe I wasn't clear. I'm not talking about this year. I'm talking about 2018. We got a closed period of 2018. What was the increase in residential values and, and commercial values in 2018, if you know?
From 17 to 18?
Correct.
Yeah, that's kind of water under the bridge. I don't have that number. What I'm telling you is what we're, well, yeah, here, hang on.
I'm sorry, 2017, yeah, the last complete year.
The sales data our office is seeing now show increased prices up just under 4% countywide from this time last year.
That's both residential and?
Well, that's primarily residential.
Okay. So it kind of looks like 4% last year, it kind of looks like 4% this year. Is that what I'm hearing?
You know, in very light pencil, I would, I'd ballpark it that way, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, like I say, I just would caution you about using a broad overall number to come to the conclusion that everybody's going to move 4%.
No, we're talking about the overall number of.
Sure.
Real estate valuations countywide hasn't gone down.
Oh, no.
Hasn't stayed the same.
No, in fact.
Has increased by somewhere in the neighborhood of 4%.
Well, some neighborhoods, much more. I found an interesting tidbit that maybe characterizes this in a World Herald piece not long ago. And they, they always use sort of, you know, real-time, real people sort of examples. And there was an instance where the writer picked up a couple that was looking for a house. He and his fiancee have been shopping for a year and a half, seeking to upgrade to a move-in-ready home with three bedrooms, a two-car garage, and a larger yard. Admittedly, he said, the same thing everybody else wants, hoping to find a midtown Omaha home around $250,000. The pair have lost more than a couple of bidding wars. People are willing to pay more than what it's actually worth to score the house, he said. The reason I read you the example is, that's sort of what market value is. I mean, if you've lost a number of bidding wars, that is the market. I mean, you may be paying more than you think it's worth, but because there's a whole bunch of others, somebody's willing to pay it, you know what? It is worth that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Boyle?
Morning.
Good morning.
First, I apologize for being late. It's been a strange morning.
Well, apologize to them. You don't need to apologize to me.
Well, Mike, I just want to take the opportunity, I'm just kidding. You were supposed to pick me up. Let's see, what I, I wanted to ask you a question about, you know, we, we go round and round about when you come down with items, this is really off track a little bit, but since you're in the seat, what, what I want to ask you is, I'm going to ask that we try to change state law on a couple of areas. One of them is that people who come in with homestead exemptions, the elderly and sometimes people suffering from dementia and so forth, and they, they blow off the deadline, and they come in and their home is suddenly going to be taxed, and they lose the homestead exemption because they didn't file in time. And so then they're sent here, and of course, from what I understand, we have no authority to grant them any relief, which bothers me tremendously because it's smoke and mirrors, and we have people down here that are asking for relief that we can't give. And of course, I always, I always make a motion to grant them the relief, and most of the time, the commissioners do that. So I would like to, and we also do that on other things that you bring down to us, not you personally, but that come down to us, that we don't have any authority to grant them relief. So I'm going to try to get, I'm going to ask that the board support legislation to grant us the authority to grant relief to taxpayers who are coming down here to get relief on their homes. And I want to know if, at least to ask you to consider supporting us in that effort, because I think it's a real good thing to treat the taxpayers this way, these citizens who have missed a deadline and just, it makes a big difference in their income, they're having difficulty paying things, and so that's what I want to ask you. Just think about it.
Well, let me, let me make a couple of, let me give you a couple of impressions, okay? One is that it isn't, it isn't just a county thing for homestead, okay?
Right.
I mean, this is something that, that we all pay for through our sales and income taxes statewide. I mean, it's a subsidy that the state provides. So for example, the, the homestead tax loss that the counties and political subdivisions have, because they aren't collecting taxes on that particular applicant's house.
Yeah.
Those get reimbursed out of the state's general fund. And so any kind of solution to this sort of an issue is probably going to have to deal with that reimbursement issue at some point. Now, my own view of it would be, and this is only my own view, it isn't even necessarily my boss's view, but I've been at this a while, and my own view is that if counties want to provide that kind of relief to that person who, you know, has failed to file despite whatever reminders they've gotten, that's fine, but perhaps the solution is that if the county wants to be that generous, it eats the cost, that the state may not be willing to reimburse on that basis. As a practical matter, if we have 15 or 20 of those a year, that's a lot. If the average tax bill for those is somewhere in the, the $2,000 to $3,000 range, you know, we're talking about $40,000 or $50,000.
Wow.
You know, it's not a huge amount, given the size of the county's budget. But one of the stick, but one of the sticking points we always get from the state is, hey, you know, as, as that noted philosopher B.B. King said, we're paying the cost to be the boss on this, and it's, it's our tax dollars, it's our general fund money. So that's the first problem that would have to be solved. The second issue is, I don't necessarily disagree with you. The longer we work with this clientele, you know, the more, the more you see that no matter how much you remind somebody you're trying, how much, how hard you try to get things in front of them, they sometimes fail. And I don't know how you would word it, and how many, you know, how many misses you would give. Currently, there are two mechanisms to file late. One is people can file between June 30 and July 20, assuming they've not been late the prior year, so there's a little bit of an additional window. And then there's the medical window that enables people with a note from their doctor.
Say, Mike, I get all those things.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you, but here's the thing that bugs me no end. First of all, it's not a big amount of money, and secondly, excuse me, we treat corporations totally different. Old women with dementia are treated poorly by us, but a corporation gets tax increment financing, and they get it, they get all these subsidies from everywhere under the sun, LB 775, we pave streets, we do all sorts of stuff for anybody, they don't have to renew anything. But we ask little old ladies with dementia to come in every year and ask for their exemption again, and again, and again. I think that's unreasonable. I think we do the same thing with a lot of small churches, and those organizations, lots of turnover. And we hammer these people, and of course, I'm not real fond of a lot of nonprofits, but the point is that we treat those people so differently. We're right on top of them, our thumb is on top of them, and we don't owe any of those things to corporations. Corporations get the money, bang, they're gone. I mean, they just do whatever they, whatever they can do with it. I mean, I don't, it's okay. I don't like that TIF comes from property taxes. You talk about, from what I understand, the city of Valley, Nebraska, 12% of its property taxes is locked up in TIFs. So I mean, it will be years, and that's, they're assessing the money, but they don't get it. It goes to the building owner. And so, I mean, you talk about an interruption of revenue, there's a big one. We need to change how that happens, I think, too. But in any event, what I would like to do is maybe treat it like they do social security. They don't have to renew every year. Why don't we give them a little bit of breath? So anyway, I'm going to pursue this, and we'll see how it all works out.
Well, that's fine, and I'd love to see what that looks like. I would provide this one cautionary tale, okay? And that is, with respect to social security, you apply once and then you're in.
Yeah.
Okay? With social security, if your status changes, there's sort of an incentive for you to tell them, like if you move, for example, so that the checks come, okay? With respect to homestead, there's really no incentive for the families to tell us that grandma has moved to the nursing home, or she's moved to Arizona, or wherever.
Mike, let me introduce, let me interrupt you. Listen, people are not going to, most people, children of people with dementia and so forth, and elderly, are not going to try to keep that homestead exemption when the parent, when their parent dies.
We've got one in the office that I'm sure you're going to see in a couple of weeks that has been doing it for years.
Okay, I understand there's fraud, but this is one person.
Okay.
So we're penalizing every person in the county across the state. I just think it's, there's a better way to do it. There's cheating on social security too, but they don't come down in like this. Anyway, I don't, I just wanted to ask your opinion. I think I know what your response is when we introduce that bill.
Well, I'd like to see what it looks like.
Oh, sure, I'll pass it on you.
We're not in the business of rejecting things without seeing what they look like.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I understand, but it's the concept I'm talking about. Okay, now, one other thing, a couple of other things. You know, I've been asking you for years, at least the office for years, about a certain building at 1818 Leavenworth Street, and you know, I love, I don't blame you, it's, this valuation has gone from, oh, I don't know, several hundred thousand, close to a million dollars, down to just hardly a valuation. Right now, today, I believe, the valuation on that building, which is the old Rikus Building, which they're holding next door, correction facility, hoping they won't want to buy it. They want 3 million the last time they asked, told us they were for sale. The valuation per square foot is $7. $7, I believe. Catty corner across the street behind the old Cantonese Steakhouse is two old homes, and they have brick foundations, which means they're really old. And their valuation is about three times that per square foot. And I go by. And I go by there occasionally, because I live in that neighborhood, and I drive by and I look, and I see this old guy sitting out on the porch, and I wave at him, waves at me. And I'm thinking, boy, are you getting hammered. You should be in the building catty corner. It's only seven bucks a square foot, and you're paying 20. Anyway, I think dilapidated buildings, frankly, particularly after a period of time, that the valuation should go up. That it should not go down. I know you're smiling, but seriously, make, make them move. The, the buildings that we have that are unoccupied, that are, and I'm not referring to the one we're possibly going to file them into domain on. But I'm just saying, these buildings that are vacant like that and are producing no income, they're draining us, they could, there's a danger to the society. They could burn and catch fire, and someone could die, and all that sort of thing. I'd like to, I'd like to ask the assessors group, maybe you bring this up to the state association, raising those valuations instead of lowering them. It would encourage development, it would clean up the area. I think it'd be great. No comments necessary. I know what you think of that. Then I wanted to ask you, was there ever a formula for corporations paying their taxes, property taxes, and the individuals? Was there ever, like even 50/50, that corporations, big buildings and companies pay 50% to the county? I mean, the revenue that comes in is equal to almost 50% or 50% for homeowners. Is there ever a formula?
No, there's no, there's no magical formula. It all relates to the market value of the property.
Well, I guess in the past, Mary Ann Borgerson shaking her head yes, there used to be some kind of a formula, and it's dropped dramatically. The homeowner is really up there producing a lot of revenue for all the county, the city and all this, from property taxes. And I at least would like to look at that again, and Commissioner Borgerson may have another comment about it, but I, I think the property homeowners are getting hammered, really hammered. So I'd just like to make that suggestion. And finally, if you could do me a favor, as you know, I'm a computer expert.
A genius, a prodigy.
Well, I have a hammer right here in case mine goes out, and bang, but anyway. I, I cannot get on your website very easily. It used to be, you know, you, you need to do it, and not for a third grader, they're smarter than me on computers. I guess, have it, have it written for me, so that I get on, I can just put the address in and bang, it pops up. But it is the darnedest thing to try to find anything, so I'm just saying, it'd be nice if you could put a, sort of a senior citizen losing his mind section that I could punch, and then get on it and find out what's going on. Just a suggestion, just a suggestion. Thanks, Mike. It's always good to see you.
Mike, you have anything to close? There's no more questions?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
There's no need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Once again, Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear, but he does vote yes, as do all the other commissioners. Motion passes.
We'll call the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Order roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 19, 2018. Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes. All voting yes.
Item two, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any items not officially listed but related to the Board of Corrections agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Say none. We'll go to item three, report from the Director of Corrections, Director Foxall.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have before you the June report for the Board of Corrections, Douglas County. We are out of the 1819 fiscal year, and I'm pleased to report that we finished the year under budget. It was touch and go up to the end, but we did finish the year under budget, so hats off to, to the staff. And it's been a, it's a very busy year, and it's been a very busy year, as you well know. With regard to community corrections and house programs, enclosure number two, Department of Corrections received notification, I know you've asked about this in the past, but Department of Corrections has received notification that the grant application submitted to the state of Nebraska for county justice reinvestment was successful. Those funds are designated for the implementation of peer support services. We're very excited about that. And if you're not familiar with peer support services, that's directly going to, directly and indirectly impact our rising, continually, continuously rising in mental health population. Planning for, plans for adding this service will commence as soon as possible. So we're going to get the position descriptions done, get the posting out, and get that, get that person hired expeditiously with a mind towards assessing that position, and then making a determination of how many more peer support specialists to bring on to augment the services that we have onboard, noting the difficulty that we have in addressing capacity, much like what's going on in the community. Three pilot programs are set to, were, were set to launch in early July, and they're operational now. Enhanced and expanded pretrial release, and we've talked about that in the past, that's up and running. Creation of a sanction center, I'll speak a little bit to that later. That directly impacts the custodial sanctions. Brought on by LB 605, those housing individuals serving short-term probation and specialty court sanctions in the work release program rather than secure jail. Population, as you know, has been rising. We'll talk a little bit about that population as well. And I'll note now and come back to it, but with the custodial sanction center, we have 15 placements thus far, and it's about 100 bed days that we save, which is really, really important, because you know, our population is going to continue to rise as we push into the warmer months of the summer and into fall, when our population really takes off. Also, Mike Myers, Community Corrections Manager, in the conversation with him, the stretch goal. Once we're fully operational with the custodial sanction centers, about 30 placements and about 200 bed days. So that's really going to positively impact, in a good way, that number in terms of pushing down those numbers of individuals in secure custody and putting them out in, in the sanction center over at work release in the criminal justice center. A partnership with United Way to provide individuals opportunity to work off fines and court costs through a service to nonprofit local agencies is also beginning in early July. Again, that should have indirect and direct impact on our population, to get people out of, out of secure custody, out into the community. A new version of Collaborate, we've talked a little bit about that in the past, too. That's the Department of Corrections reentry case management software. That was launched in June after several months of planning and development. The updated version allows for jail-wide utilization rather than being specific to particular programs. This is a really important data gathering piece, and if you can get good data, then you could do good analysis. If you can do good analysis, then you can build on existing programs and develop additional programs. So we're really excited about getting that piece up. That will enhance what we did with the, the survey of 6,000 inmates coming into the facility. That 11-page survey instrument that I spoke of a few months ago, UNO is working on the analysis of that. Now, we can almost do real-time analysis of the needs of the inmate population coming in, so I'm very excited about, about, about that. So rather than stroke a pen and stick figures and, and things like that, we really have a real live database that Mike's people can utilize in order to make up-to-date assessments and change on the fly if we have to, and project needs for the future. Also, while not a DCD program, I want to take an opportunity here today to recognize the Veterans Treatment Court. They held their first graduation in June. Really excited about that. I know several of you were in attendance. Each of the four graduates started their journey culminating in graduation while receiving services for the veterans while incarcerated at DC, DC, at our facility. And folks, that, that, if you weren't here, you had to see that to realize people can change. You just have to provide the support services on the front end, hang with them through the rough period. Effective case management on the backside once they leave, and people can change. And probably wasn't videotaped, but I think that was something to see. And so I take my hat off to everybody that worked on that, and I know it's a whole host of names from our folks, our staff at Department of Corrections, the volunteers that came in to the Veterans Housing Unit, to Judge Mark Ashford, who was steering that and, and brought that to fruition, and it continues on today. So it's really something, something special to see, and the journey for those individuals coming out of, out of corrections continues. And again, I will emphasize, theoretically, once you leave our place, our responsibility ends. But I don't believe that. Our responsibility continues. We all live in this community. And in, in order to make our community safe, in order to promote opportunities for the people that haven't had a lot, we need to continue on with what we can do or what we can promote in the community so that they make that smooth transition. That effective case management post-release is critical to continued success that they started while incarcerated. The 24/7 alcohol sobriety program had 37 admissions. There were 3,005 breath tests were completed, six were positive for alcohol use. There were five no-shows for alcohol breath testing. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.6%. So that program continues to flourish. Forty-five individuals were monitored for a total of 895 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, one tampering violation, two alcohol violations. Overall SCRAM compliance rate was 99.8%. There were 336 drug tests administered. There were 15 drug test violations. One was positive for drug patch violation. There was one positive drug patch violation, I'm sorry, and 15 no-shows for drug testing. So of all the drug testing that, that those folks are doing at the Criminal Justice Center, that program is going well also. Work release admitted 30 individuals last month. Work release clients donated 648 hours of community service to various public and private charitable organizations. House arrest admitted 71 individuals. Reentry assistance program admitted 25 individuals. One individual obtained their GED. So a little bit about the GED program. As you well know, the GED program changed a couple of years back. And our staff are very diligent in working with the inmate population to ensure that those individuals that are successful, that attempting to achieve success, sit in their classroom, do their homework, take their practice test, and then take their ultimate test, and then move on to, to the GED graduation. And as you know, just recently, this, earlier this summer, we had a GED graduation, and we will have another one of those as we amass more GED graduates. And that graduation was right here, and that was something to see as well. Corrections programs, in-house programs. Forty-nine individuals were admitted to corrections programs in the jail. One individual obtained their GED. So very pleased with that success in secure custody. With regard to pretrial services, 12 individuals were referred to priority prosecution, saved 183 bed days. 351 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,000 individuals were monitored on pretrial release. Another program that I haven't made much mention of, but also speaks to preparing individuals for release from custody. And I would say that when you are considering programs for individuals in a jail environment, recall that we are a short-term facility, and our population really turns over pretty quickly. We do 18,000 bookings a year. We may book 35 people on one shift. We do 1,500, 1,600 people coming through the door a month, and I'll, I'll speak to those numbers a little bit later. We may have 1,500, 1,600 people releasing. So some would say, well, you know, your population is turning over too fast in order for programs to be viable. Wrong. Absolutely not. If you can get them for a few days, a few weeks, a few months, apply the program, apply the intervention, and then hopefully you can make the connection with that individual while incarcerated, and then help that individual make the connection post-release so they can continue what they started while in custody. Coming back to this particular bullet point, Serve Safe Manager and Food Handler Training and Certificate Program was, is hosted by our food service provider, Airmark. Serve Safe is a food and beverage safety training and certificate program. It's administered by the National Restaurant Association. The program is accredited by the American National Standards Institute and the Conference for Food Protection. Serve Safe certification is required by most restaurants, has a basic qualification for their management staff. This certification provides a solid foundation for finding employment in the food service industry. The five sections of the program, basic food safety, personal hygiene, cross-contamination, allergies, time and temperature, and cleaning and sanitation, provide information to safely handle food, prevent foodborne illness, proper food storage, time and temperature requirements, safety and sanitation procedures, and how to receive foods properly. Being Serve Safe certified means that an individual understands the principles outlined in the Serve Safe program, and that they are able to demonstrate their knowledge by passing Serve Safe Food Protection Manager Certification exam with a score of 75% or higher. The exam given onsite, Department of Corrections to the inmates, no cost to the participant. The exam is administered by the Airmark Food Service Director, Karen, who is licensed Serve Safe provider. In the eight months since this program began, five individuals have passed the Serve Safe test and are certified. And so they walk through the jail and do my rounds, and they walk through the kitchen, some of the inmates who have taken or are studying for that particular certification, really excited about what they've accomplished. And they see an opportunity, releasing from a short-term facility, to get a job on the outside that starts them or launches them on a career that they otherwise might not have had, had they not had the opportunity. So back to the original point, yes, you can have an impact on individuals in a short-term facility. And while this program doesn't come under Mike's shop, this is something that Airmark brought to us. Absolutely, we want to have a Serve Safe certification program, and we need to continue to move ahead with that. There are some individuals who have tested and not passed, but they are continuing to study so that they, so that they can pass. They're working down in our kitchen unit, and they take these skills with them into the community. So it's another opportunity for success post-release. Enclosure number three, it's compliance, still collecting data with respect to our compliance areas. Enclosure number four, I bullied it out, what we've done with regard to hiring since the beginning of the year in the first, first class. So you can see the various stages that the classes that we've hired are, are in. Most recently, officers from 18-4. That's a class of 25. They will graduate this Friday at 1:00 right here. So if you're able to attend the graduation, I'd certainly like to invite all of you. The class of 25, it's going to be a packed house, and the family and friends, plus the 25 graduates, and the staff will be here. 1:00 legislative chambers here encourage you to attend if you are able to do so. The, this class then will begin on Sunday. The next new hire class is scheduled to begin on July 30. So graduate a class on Friday, start another class on Monday, and that class will be 22. That should bring us right about even with our targeted staffing level. And then we've already begun to interview for the next class, and my stretch goal for that class is 25 to 30. So that should take us over the population, or excuse me, over our target staffing level. And the reason for doing so is so we can address attrition. Okay. Enclosure number five, population. We had 1,687 admissions last month. Again, it's a busy place. We had 1,722 releases last month. Our high count was 1,299, our low count was 1,231. Our ADP, or our average daily population, was 1,257. We had, before I move to, to that next bullet point. If we had not pushed down our, our fed population in the spring, we'd be sitting at about 1,500 people, okay? We have beds for 1,452. So again, our population continues to rise, both on the day-to-day arrests and the fed population, and really have to pay particular attention to managing that population with a mind towards the heat that brings on increased traffic, and the fall that also brings on increased traffic because of the offense violations occurring late spring and through the summer. So really keeping an eye on that, and we'll continue to push down fed populations in order to make room for the rising numbers. So as I said, if we had not pushed those populations down, we'd be- So as I said, if we had not pushed those populations down, we'd be at 1,500. And obviously, that would be problematic. So managing the population is a day-to-day thing with respect to, to space. Custodial sanction bed days, as you know, I've added that chart, some pages 37 and 38. Had 407 custodial sanction bed days last month. That continues to trend up. You see that chart on page 38. Probation violations, as I've spoken to in the past, about 2015, we had 20. Now, 120. So we are attempting to manage that population, hopefully, not hopefully, I'm, I'm very optimistic that Mike's pre-trial program will address the pre-trial population so we can make room for, for the, the rising number of VOPs. If you take a look at that probation violator chart that's on page, at the bottom of page 37, you'll see that the felonies are up. And that chart continues to trend upward for us. And recall again, and I've spoken to this in the past, that the probation violators tend to stay a little bit longer than the off-street arrest as they get in front of the judge and, and are assessed. But again, Mike's pre-trial program, very optimistic that that will, will have an impact on the pre-trial population. Maybe not so with, with the VOPs, but with the other pre-trial detainees, of which we're about 73, 74% of my population are pre-trial detainees. But we continue to work on that, and we continue to try to be creative on how to address that The US Marshal population was up. ICE population up. Felony pre-trial population up. Misdeemed pre-trial population up. Female population up. So we're up all across the board. Enclosure number six, medical intake screenings, 1,443. H&amp;Ps, 453. Mental health, 127 psych assessments, 121 mental health assessments, 51 infirmary replacements to mental illness. Referrals to community-based mental health services, border mental health referrals for long-term psych. For mental health continues to be an exacerbating issue for us. But we continue to, to respond. I think the, the GRI grant is certainly going to help. The reentry staff that we hired certainly will help. Ongoing meetings with stakeholders in the community, external stakeholders, will continue to help. But it's, it's, it's a work in progress. I believe that's it. Are there questions?
There are. Commissioner Morgan.
Mark, I want to thank you for your report, and I also want to thank you for your service and leadership at our correction facility, which is most important to the respect and service that you provide and the leadership and the role model you are there in, walking through the correction facility constantly and trying to make it the best it can be. I'll say something, speaking just for myself. I hope as we go through that selection process, and I hope the other commissioners would agree, I'd certainly like to have you participate with us in the interview process because we really want to pick the absolute best person we can find nationally or wherever to serve, you know, in that position that you have filled so diligently in caring. So that may be a little out of the ordinary, but I consider that correction facility and our health center to be the most important things that we have the responsibility for. So you can think about that a little bit. And again, I just want to thank you personally for the excellent caring service that you've provided there. So I wish you the best. I'm happy that you feel like, hey, it's the right time and the stress and all the things to leave. I'm saddened for us, but I am happy for you and your future and your families. And I thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Boy.
Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Morgan really hit the nail on the head. Your service has been extraordinary, and I want to mention that we did earlier in the week, Commissioner Borgeson and Chair Rogers participated by telephone. He was out of town. Patrick, Mark, and myself participated in naming the temporary person. You may, at some point today, want to make an announcement. If you haven't already, I think you have, but, and he is serving on the committee to find a replacement. It's, and frankly, I'll be very honest, in my estimation, it was very much his choice for the temporary person that really prevailed. We rely heavily on what he has to say because he, well frankly, knows what he's doing. So I appreciate the relationship I've had with him. It's been an honor to work with you. I've worked with others in the past, and you are a standout. You know, the whole attitude about, you know, there's a second chance really helps. And I know that when I've been invited to speak to the new recruits, one of the word that is really, one of the words that has really impressed upon them is that while there are people who are locked up, they deserve respect in all aspects. And the word "respect" is used throughout the, throughout the whole training session so that these people that are, folks that are locked up in many cases are neighbors. You know, I have relatives that have been locked up, and I have a young grandnephew now who is in the state penitentiary. So I mean, we have, this happens to families. And so the attitude of respect has permeated the whole staff. And the relationship that you have with the union is remarkable as well. It's an open dialogue that really leads to your ability to impress upon them what should happen in that facility. So I'm just really so happy with what you've done and very apprehensive about finding someone who can begin to fill your shoes. So in any event, I do want to mention a couple of things that I'm of concern in those, these programs. When you go through the programs, if we looked back 15 years ago at an agenda that was being presented to us by a director, none of that, absolutely none of it, would have been there. And all the things that you're doing are focused on what you said and the word that you use, "respect." It, it translates into how you treat people and trying to get them on the, on the straight and narrow at such a brief period of time. And one of the things that I get concerned about is people coming out of the, whether it's the state penitentiary or wherever, who have a felony conviction hanging over their head, and how do they, how do they get back into the community? I know a young man who worked for an independent car dealer, and he notarized a transfer of a title, and it turns out that it was fraudulent, a car that was used in a felony, and all sorts of stuff. Now that young man has a felony against his record, and, you know, it's going to haunt him forever. Things happen, and I, we need to really focus too on restoring rights, trying to figure out a way to do that as well and, and try to get them back into society. One of the things I observed is that there's a priest, oddly enough, a Jesuit in California, his name is Father Boyle, of all things. But anyway, Father Boyle operates a bakery in Los Angeles for men, young men coming out of gangs. And it has a catchy name that I can't remember now, actually.
Homeboy Industries.
What is it?
Homeboy.
Homeboy Industries. Okay, well, you're aware of it. Father Boyle's been in Omaha. I have never met him, but something like that, I suppose a larger city can do that. But things like that really interest me, and also getting people interested in mechanics and so forth. But your touching them is so short, your period of being able to influence them is not very long, but you've done a remarkable job. So I've got some notes here, but I think those are the things that I really wanted to talk about. You know, your relationship with all of us, you know, you're honest, you call us, we trust you, and you've done a great job. And we're looking, I'm looking forward to your helping us find a, a person that can step in and, and start doing, continue doing what you're doing. So I want to personally thank you. And before you leave, we probably should do, not today necessarily, but do a tour of the facility. And if you do that for us, it'd be great. We'll get that arranged with your schedule.
Sure. I'll set it up and to give you an opportunity to see where we're at with regard, as we approach the second phase of the construction project.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the person who's going to be the temporary replacement?
Yes, the temporary replacement, well.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Not yet.
Okay, you're, you're in charge. In charge.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Dr. Foxall. You're a real, really terrific guy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would state that with respect to Father Boyle and Homeboy Industries, went out there, had an opportunity to tour his facility, speak to him. Truly a remarkable person. I think the concept of what he is doing in, in Los Angeles, particularly downtown Los Angeles, with gang members is, is unbelievable. We've looked at with other people in the community, how do you replicate something like that here? Talking about that, I know there's discussions ongoing in the community to try to replicate something like that here. And I, I think that can happen here with, with the right people, with the right resources behind it. Absolutely replicate, not certainly in its entirety, but some of the, the basic tenets of what he does certainly can be replicated here and have an impact on, on our community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Dr. Foxall, congratulations. You've, you've really done a great job with Douglas County, and we really appreciate it. We owe you a debt of gratitude. Somebody once said that a society is judged on how it treats the people that it imprisons. And I think that your administration has shown a level of humane and compassionate corrections that really sets a high bar, and that's, that's a reflection of your philosophy and leadership. I want to personally thank you. I've had numerous contacts with the Department of Corrections over the years as a lawyer, and I've always found the staff there to be professional and helpful and above-board. And that again, is a reflection of your administration and your leadership. You're going to be a tough man to replace, and we're sorry to see you go, as you've heard. Sorry for us, but I, I think glad for you. I know that you're moving on to academia where you'll do a great job, I'm sure. But I can't tell you how much we've appreciated your leadership in one of our key departments and what you've done at Douglas County Corrections, I think will stand the test of time. We look forward to hearing from you later this afternoon, maybe on the next phase of the Douglas County Corrections Public Safety Bond build-out that you've led through some, some really kind of tough situations, which I would like to touch on real quickly here. We've heard from you repeatedly, and I think correctly, that we have a crisis situation with overpopulation and understaffing. And the population numbers that you give us today, particularly the high population of almost 1,300, indicate that that's not going away. Is that right?
That's correct.
In addition, we've struggled with recruiting and retaining qualified individuals to be corrections officers. And you indicate that we've got a class coming on of 25 and, and more people being trained in the short term that will help alleviate that. Is that, did I hear you correctly? Is that intended to get us to a full staffing situation this year, next year?
This year. We should be at full staff September 10th.
I'm sorry.
Or the 17th, the 10th or the 17th. Talking about when we're going to start that, got a class starting on, on Monday.
Right.
It's 22. And we'll run those folks through, and we'll have another class right behind it, starting on September 10th to the 17th, depending on how, how the interviews, interviews go. That should take us, that should take us over. That September 10th class should take us over our targeted staffing level.
And they would be available for service when, the September 10th class?
They will go through six weeks of the academy, couple of weeks of Field Training Officer Program, so eight weeks out, they're on their own.
Okay. Well, that's really great news. I noticed that in our HR report, we still have continuous postings for 20 corrections officer ones. Actually, we have two postings for 20 corrections officers ones, so I don't know if that means 40 or what. And an additional posting for 20 correction officer twos. Will those still be continuously posted as far as you know?
We will monitor the attrition, but my plan is to have those postings up and continuous throughout the balance of the calendar year.
Okay. When we get to this point after the September class comes online, what will be the number, what, what's the complement of corrections officers at that point serving Douglas County?
That number would be, it would probably be in the 370s, somewhere about there.
Okay.
And depending on what our attrition is.
Okay. So, you know, the staffing problem might be alleviated by addition of these new people, but we still have population problem, and we're in the same facility. I mean, the, the peak population this year, I think was, or this month, was 1,299 or 1,300 individuals.
We're 1,300 this weekend.
Okay.
Over 1,300.
All right. And do you see a way forward on that?
Long-term, yes. Long-term, I think we have to continue to be aggressive with the programs that Mike has oversight of, and that's with the pre-trial program, with the Custodial Sanction Center. I think we, if we're going to take a bite out of the population, it's going to have to come out of the pre-trial population. That sentenced population, you know, we're sitting at 1,300 people, we may have 110, 115 people that are sentenced. That's it. And when I mentioned that number, people are shocked, "Oh, my gosh, 110 out of 1,300?" Yes, that's it. And if we've rung that population out, work release, house arrest, and other types of programs, it's the pre-trial population that continues to, to drive our, to drive our count. So we've got some really ambitious programs underway. Had a lot of conversations with external stakeholders. So that's a longer-term approach, I believe, with respect to contemporary numbers and what we're going to do. We're going to have to push down, we've got a plan. We, we have a plan to address the, the rising population, and we have a plan, because they're going to close down two housing units for the, for the construction in September or October. So we have a plan for that, and that plan's going to try to push down the federal numbers and also continue to attack that, that VOP population too, with discussions. And I've also talked to you about the conversation I've had with probation and getting probation onboard to help us move some of the PSI's out a lot faster. And that hopefully will come to fruition soon as well. But we've had a lot of conversations with, with probation. Probation touches the violation of probation, they touch the custodial sanctions, so a lot of conversations with them. So as long as we continue to maintain those relationships and communication between that particular component of the criminal justice system, the, the population will be manageable as best it can be, realizing that I don't control the population of people coming into the facility. But knowing that, you still have to be responsive to it and project as best you can what's going to happen, and have a plan for, okay, A's not working, B's not working, then we got to go to Plan C. So, and that's a tough question. And, and I, I thought we, I thought we would, I thought we would really explode in July with the heat and the summer, but I think taking the steps to push down that fed population helped us not get over, as I said, had we not done what we did in the spring, we'd be at 1,500. So we, we meet every day at 9:00 as an executive team. We try to anticipate what the next thing is going to be and have a plan in place. And if you don't have anything in place, then you're getting calls at 10:00 on a Saturday night or 2:00 in the morning, going, "Okay, you know, we're filling up." Our female population, I haven't spoke to that in a while, our female population still hovers around 200. When I started in this business 18 years ago, we... When I started in this business 18 years ago, we, 78% of the population were female. Now we're running 200 female, we're running 15% females. And they're coming in, DV, assault, things that you can't put folks out in the community for. So the complexity of the female population has changed dramatically over time, which is why Commissioner Borges, Commissioner Boyle and I have sat down on numerous occasions talking about, okay, what are we doing for the females, what are we doing for the females? And that's an ongoing conversation that I know we're having with Mike Myers and Justin Wall, Cindy Boganowski, my reentry folks, and, okay, what other things can we bring to the table that A, will preclude involvement with law enforcement in the first way, in the first place, and then B, prepare them for success post-release? So with Collaborate, with the survey that we did several months ago, 6,000 inmates, assessing what that need is, that's going to help give Mike the tools to help address the needs of the female population. With Collaborate, loading up the data, we have a lot of repeat, a lot of repeat traffic. So people will come back in, they will all ready to be in Collaborate, so we'll know, okay, what do you need here, we won't have to redo the whole thing because we've got a baseline and then we can work on that. A lot of reentry, I remember Barb Glazer, if you remember Barb Glazer, ran in-house programs for years and years and was really a champion of programs, the female population. Told me, you can't judge your success in terms of instant preclusion, coming back to jail. Rather, that person's going to come back, you know, a person that's been addicted for 20 years or has struggled for 20 years, a six-month stint in jail is certainly not going to resolve all of their issues, but what you do look for is the length of time between return visits to jail. And we looked at several inmates and we looked at people, that they were coming back every couple of weeks, every month, every three months, every six months, then you begin to see over time, as intervention began to take effect, that the length of time between return visits to jail is getting longer and longer and then they stop coming at all. And that's how you measure, it's one way that you measure your success. So that's why it's important to, in a short-term facility, have the programs so they're coming back, you reapply the intervention, you reapply the intervention, you hook them back up with opportunities on the outside, you hold their hand to get them there and hopefully you will get to achieve some success. And we have some success, I, you know, I live in the community and see people all the time, Foxall, you know, I'm doing okay, I'm not at your place, thank you, you know, I've got bed problems, you don't need to come back to my place. But, I'm doing, I'm doing good, I got a job, I'm doing okay. You know, that's what this is all about, I'm doing good. And if you can sustain that, that's what this job's all about. My fond memories of this place, there are many, but, but being able to change, have some influence on the change of the organization and how we go about our business, with our staff, staffing, programming, inmates, relationships with the internal and external stakeholders, all of that, it's not just about me. We have, and I've said this on numerous occasions before, a great staff, great staff. They work hard, they're underappreciated, but they work really hard and they put up with a lot. A lot of things that, not appropriate to even mention here, but they remain professional and they really, really, they've worked some really tough hours and this staffing shortage and this population explosion, those men and women of the Department of Corrections are working some long hours in some tough conditions, I take my hat off to them, absolutely. It's not about what Mark did, it's about what we did together and you folks. Because if I don't have support of you guys, things don't work so well. So the support that you've been able to provide us and the support from the external stakeholders and the support from the union, support from the staff, and even the support from the inmate population. I remember a few years ago, we had that power outage and those guys and gals did what they were supposed to do, inmate population, the staff did a heck of a job in responding to an immediate crisis situation. They knew what to do, they're well-trained, they handle their business and we resolved without incident. So be very proud of what the men and women of the Department of Corrections have done, I know I am.
Well, thank you for that tour de force of your, you know, exactly what I was talking about, progressive, enlightened, compassionate corrections philosophy that you've brought and put into practice at Douglas County Correction Center. Just personally, I'd like to say that, you know, I take great pride in the fact that you and I are alums of the same educational institution here and at Creighton Prep, they drilled into us that we were at best to be men for others. You are a living embodiment of that Jesuit philosophy and I don't know too many people have done it better. The ideas that you brought, I know that you inherited from a proud line of ancestors who, I've known your father and your grandfather, worked with my father here in Douglas County and you're, come from a great family. And we're proud to have you as part of our community and glad that you're sticking around and I wish you great success in academia and in publishing, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, you mentioned the Veterans Court when you started?
Yes, sir.
And I was at that graduation. And if you look into the eyes of the children and saw their children, the eyes of their parents, their brothers, sisters and cousins, you could see the pride. And this is going to make a long-term difference, it's going to trickle down. This is where trickle-down theory works, it doesn't work in finances, but it works, clerk called that. But it works here. I, quick question, I was very proud to be there and I hope to be here Friday. I logged it in my calendar and I have to fight a conflict, but I'm going to do my best to be here. The Safe Serve program, what is the length of a course?
It's self-paced.
The Self-Safe, I'm sorry.
It's ServeSafe.
ServeSafe.
It's a self-paced program, which is really good for our environment.
So somebody, what would you suggest is the average night of time?
Ooh.
A week, a month?
Oh, no, no, I, they have to study, there's things that they have to read, they have to take the practice test, they have to take their test, I'd say it's several weeks.
Okay, and?
Five, six, some more, eight weeks.
Okay, good.
Again, it's self-paced, depends on the individual.
Right, that I understand, but I was just trying to get a feel for it. And the violation of probation, I know some people get a very minor violation. Are they sent back or is there some leniency perhaps?
That's a court decision and I could not speak to that.
Okay, now, we're talking about population decrease and with what we've done in the past nine years, the slow decrease we've been able to achieve at our youth detention center, that should have the effect of decreasing the adult population, should have, okay? A lot of it depends on home environment, but in the youth center, we're working hard on reading skills. Working hard on reading skills keeps many of these youth in their education. To decrease the population, we need to increase the empathy of our environment, meaning both sides. The people who are in prison, their empathy, and the people who want to send anybody who violates a law to prison, both of the sides have to have empathy. We need to work on educational opportunities, job opportunities, employment opportunities, and transportation to get to that job. And if we can slowly, it won't happen overnight unfortunately, but if we can achieve those goals, population should decrease, let's just hope, and let's work on it, thank you.
Commissioner Borges?
I think.
That happens all the time, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Commissioner Craft asked the first question I had about how long it takes to go through the program and so if individuals start the program and are released, is there an opportunity for them out in the community to be able or come back to the facility through Community Corrections to finish the program that they started or are they then just left on their own to finish it once they get out?
That's a follow-up question that I need to ask.
Okay.
Airmark folks, I would, I would think that, I don't think we've, we don't have it, as I said, we've been operational about six months, five months now, we don't have anything set up through Mike's program, but I will say that a lot of Mike's folks, that Mike Myers and Community Corrections Manager, a lot of people that leave his program in midstream, come back. I mean, who hears of somebody coming back to jail to finish what they started? I mean, in the advancement sense as opposed to the sentence sense. And so I think that we certainly could set something like that up, Michael? Mike's shaking his head, yes, done deal. Or we could partner up with Metropolitan Community College that has an excellent, excellent culinary arts program.
Right, exactly.
And I'm sure they have ServeSafe on site there as well.
And is that program available to the women who are incarcerated?
Yes.
Okay. And then when Commissioner Craft was talking about the reading issues, I know that we had discussions about the, trying to screen for dyslexia, because a lot of times we don't know that an individual has that and I would like to try to pursue that a little bit more because there have been many instances where individuals are looked at more as behavioral problems versus the diagnosis of dyslexia, which then interferes with their learning capabilities. And so if we could continue those discussions or ratchet them up a little bit more. And then also maybe get back in the loop about the brain injury versus mental health. You know, I think when we did the 6,000 assessments, we had quite an eye-opener about that. And, you know, kudos to getting our staff up to where we need them to be and then continue to work on getting even overstaffed, just so that we take care of that attrition, that's huge. How are we doing, or have we had discussions with law enforcement on the, recently, on the site and release program? Is that dwindled off, are they still, you know, gung ho on those? I mean, with our population rising and is there, is there some correlation to that program not being used versus they just can't?
We had a report from the Police Department at the last, or next to last Colonel's, June, it was the May Management Council meeting, and we looked and saw their arrest numbers were up for a variety of reasons. And in the time that I have left, my plans is to make the rounds, to have some conversations, about some unfinished business and that's one of the pieces, to come back around to that and have had a really good relationship with the Omaha Police Department and have been very responsive to requests over time. So that's a conversation that we'll have and, because there's a lot of things go into addressing that site and are you even eligible for release to the street?
Right.
What's the public safety nexus and so we have to keep that in mind as well. But I think Deputy Chief Kerry Newman reported on that at the May meeting, so he and I, and maybe the chief will come back around, have a discussion before I'm done.
Okay, good. And then the female population, are we able to break down mental health issues with the incarcerated females? How many have mental health issues? Okay, can we maybe see that, just to see what we're dealing with, with that population? And then just on the mental health, there've been, in the past, there were conversations about doing a pilot for long-term injectables and that conversation is going to be placed back on the table for further discussion. I think that, again, if we do a pilot to show that individuals that are on these drugs are able to stay on their medication and then not come back into the system and that's what the goal is. And so that's one thing. And then the other thing is, are we still doing the CIT training with our correctional officers? Okay.
We are, we had, and you know what, I think, I'm glad you brought that up because I failed to mention, I think I failed to mention this, that during the month of June, because the 19th, the 20th and 21st, the Department of Justice, we've established a relationship with the Department of Justice, United States Bureau of Prisons, National Institute of Corrections, Jails Division, to become a innovation, a center for innovation. And what that means is they host for free regional training here. So jails, Colonel Justice representatives from around the region, to include the state and county and city can partake in free training. So over the course of the 19th of June, the 20th of June and the 21st of June, we held three classes of mental health first aid, 30 seats per, mental health first aid is an eight-hour class, had 30 seats times three, it's 120, 120 seats for three days for free. We had participants from across the state come in, came in from Iowa as well. So, and I mentioned that because that's the same entity that helped us go live with Crisis Intervention Team Training, corrections specific. So we've had five CIT classes, we're going to schedule another one for the fall and we've slowed that down a bit, where we were wrestling with the population and with our staffing, we get back up to staff, then we're going to drive, we're going to bring, move forward again with the CIT classes, all our supervisors, I believe all of our supervisors have been CIT trained, now we're working on the CO1, CO2s and we can seat 24, 25 per class. So certainly in the fall, there'll be another CIT class coming along and if staffing permits, we'll try to squeeze another one in late fall before the end of the calendar year.
So of our current workforce, would we say a fourth, a third?
Maybe a third.
Okay, all right, just so that we continue to work on that.
But the, maybe more than that because we have people that are, and mental health first aid, that eight-hour block of training is kind of a precursor to CIT, which is a 40-hour block. So we have people that are CIT and mental health first aid trained, some people that are CIT only trained and some people that are mental health first aid trained. So we're trying to attack it at both, so people that we don't, we don't have, we can't get them into a 40-hour class, try to get them into this eight-hour class, so they have that, they're armed with that resource and it's really a great opportunity for individuals that don't have, we don't have the resources to set them for the 40, so we've got to mix.
And is there a way, when we talk about LB 605, is there a way to, or is there a correlation at all of those that are violating and mental health? Are we seeing those that violate, are those ones that have mental health issues? Or are there, is that population, is there an increase in seeing that they have mental health issues? Or is there a way to analyze that?
There is a way to analyze that and that's something that we would have to, it's been tough to analyze just the people that are coming in as a result of the implications of 605. Trying to break it down is, in terms of who has mental health issues or who doesn't, that can be done.
Okay.
That'll take a little bit of work, but it can be done, so now we've got a better handle on the violation of probation and the custodial sanctions, so yeah, we can, we can work on that. And I think the Collaborate piece that Mike has is something that can help that as well, Michael? Mike shaking his head again, yes, so his task, his to-do list gets longer.
Gets longer and longer.
But, I mean, that's a good thing because if we don't ask the question, there's thousands of different questions to ask in order to get more data. But I think this Collaborate is really going to help us try to address some of those particular issues.
Okay, and then the US Marshals, the ICE, do we, what? Okay. And then the US Marshals, the ICE, do we, what number of quote beds do we hold for those that will be incarcerated due to being a US Marshal populator or a ICE populator?
None now. We don't have to, we don't have to reserve any beds for Marshal or ICE.
We don't have to, but do we?
No.
I mean, are we?
No.
So the population that we have today does not include any of those, even though those populations have increased? So it says US Marshal population increased?
Yes.
So how many?
We don't, we don't reserve any beds. We can, we can adjust that number depending on what our off-street numbers are. There's not a floor that I can't go below. If we need to go to 90, we'll go to 90. If we need to go to 80, we'll go to 80. Just have to sit down with the, with the, with the Marshal. And that's one more thing on my to-do list, is sit down with the Marshal, and sit down with ICE and have that conversation. So they know what we are anticipating in the fall with regard to higher population and with regard to the phase two of the construction project.
But I, you could come back at a later date, you don't need to do it right now, and tell me how many are in our facility that are US Marshal?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you were looking, was there a set number that I had reserved? No. Our Marshal population is 114, and our ICE population is 45.
Forty-five, okay.
We work 200 and, 200 on the Marshal side, and about 50 or 60 on the ICE side. So we've come down significantly.
Okay, good.
We've hit 100 on the Marshal population, but we're creeping back up. ICE population's creeping back up, and we're down to 25.
Okay. And then just the last thing, and probably one more to-do list item. I had a conversation with Sarpy County folks to see if they are still interested in pursuing some type of either doing mental health stuff together or what. They are progressing quite rapidly with their plans, but they would be willing to come back together. And so I was going to see if Commissioner Boyle would pull that group together just to have the conversation. Region Six hired the individual for the stepping up initiative to work with all counties with that national effort, and she's doing a spectacular job. And she would be, and she was at the table, willing to do whatever it is to see what we could do together, because there's no reason for counties to kind of go off and do things on their own if that county is a part of the region and the region can coordinate those services. And so if we could get that group back together, just to say, okay, here's what they're looking at, here's what we're looking at, is there something that we can do together? And they're willing to do that. And we probably should do it sooner rather than later, since they are moving rapidly. And then along that line, also the discussion about what we could potentially do together with our female populations, together. That, again, we're seeing the increase, they're seeing an increase. What is it that we can do to, again, not bring them into the system, but once they're into the system, what can we do together?
I know there's a lot on the plate for me, but could we do that next week?
Yeah, we can make that.
I'd like to be at the table for that.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Borgson.
Who's going to set that meeting?
We'll work on it.
I will.
Okay.
Commissioner Borgson.
Yes, I have a request. When, when Mr. Borgson wants to speak, I'd appreciate it if you called her Commissioner LaFong. So then I would hear it. Capital L, small a, capital F, small o, small n, small g. That's from WC Fields. Mrs. Carl LaFong. Anyway, sorry, my hearing. I, I really am, I shouldn't drag this on, but I, one of the, all the programs you've mentioned and so forth, I mean, it really, you have had the skill of hiring and surrounding yourself with some pretty terrific people. And Mike Myers is really a standout. And he's the one who puts these things together. And also, the attitude you have working with Sherry Glassnap from the Mental Health Facility. I visited with Carol over at Community Alliance. I stopped in to see her, and she talked about your relationship. That's what I want to see continue, and the person that we bring in. So, and I hope we keep it local, I'll be honest with you. I prefer local much more than this national search stuff. The first thing they do is, you know, paint the cars, or paint the cells, or something crazy, you know. Anyway, so I wanted to mention Mike, because he's the very critical part of your operation. And I didn't want that to go by, because you're the person who brought him in. And I, again, that's just another one of your skill sets. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. Real quick, tying back to what Commissioner Borgson said, or LaFong.
Mrs. LaFong.
When she was talking about dyslexia, my wife was a school nurse, grade school. And she partnered with one of the eyeglass companies. And they tested third graders, I believe, eyes. And if they needed glass, they gave them glasses. Because it's hard to read if you can't focus on the word. Do we have any partnerships like that? Alliance Club?
We do not. Not, we do not.
Okay. I think it might be worthwhile to pursue.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. And, brain injury, that is a very major issue. It affects you, your life. I've worked with people who've had brain injury. And some of them, I'll, I'll use an example of one of the employees I mentored. I told him to pick up a 2305 chest, and I had five of them, and load it into a customer's car. All of these were brand new. And about an, half an hour later, the customer comes in and says, where's my chest? So I went down and found the gentleman who was supposed to load it into the car. And he's studying and staring at the 2305s. He said, you didn't say which one. Now, this gentleman I know had suffered a brain injury in a car accident. And it's a very real thing. And then back to the Veterans Court, because I'm so proud of what we've done there. The Drug Court, another fine example of helping families, of helping individuals avoid reincarceration, enhance their opportunities for employment, the success with the family life. This is wonderful. And I just wanted to do my commentary there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, there's no further questions. Let me ask you, so is Mike going to start recording the enhanced pre-trial? Will we see that next month? Since this is the first, okay. So we look forward to that. Other than that?
I do have.
Next week, we'll be official.
I do have one more, one more thing.
Okay, I'll give it back to you.
Okay. As I turn around and look at Mike, I notice in my, LaVon's standing in my peripheral vision. And we've had a lot of conversations about external stakeholders and partnerships with people that we can hand off individuals to, so they can continue their success. And since she's here, I like to tell LaVon, thank you for what you've done for us. And thank you for what you've done for the population of individuals that are leaving here. Leaving, not here, leaving our, our facility. Her Reconnect Program has been absolutely wonderful. She makes those connections with the individuals while they're incarcerated here, at the Community Corrections, we're in the RAP Program. And then she, she and her staff continue to work with those individuals so they're successful post-release. And as I said at the outset here today, that's the key. If you can make that connection on the inside, and then you can carry that through post-release, and help that person be successful, and hold their hand until they can stand on their own, that's, that's an important ingredient to success. So LaVon, I didn't mean to call you out, meeting, but thank you for what you've done.
Commissioner Borgson.
Yes, I, I hope I'm not catching you off guard, but Patrick, we have a, some meetings scheduled, set up to begin a search and so forth. Are you able to give the rest of the commissioners? I do intend to involve all the commissioners somehow in this, so that we get everyone's opinion. And as a group hiring, it's not going to be a single person or a single group. Patrick, can, do you have anything on the, that you can talk about the schedule, so the commissioners and the public will know what's coming up?
Yeah, there's going to be a search committee. There's been a search committee formed. So it's you, Chris Rogers, me, Mark Foxall, and Bob Houston, who's a former corrections director who teaches at UNO. So what's going to happen is, once the posting comes down and applications are received, I'll send those out to the members of the search committee, give them some time to review that. And then the search committee will meet, review, and discuss the applications, narrow them down to a handful for the full board to conduct interviews.
Good. And I, I believe Mary Ann Borgson's on that initial committee, isn't she?
Oh, yeah, we added Mary Ann as well. Thanks.
All right, good deal. Okay, well, thank you, Patrick. And we'll have some dates and so forth to get everyone alerted to what's happening. Thanks. And we will involve the board fully, and the public for that.
Mark, you got a week left. And next week, we do plan on recognizing you. But some people have said it, and just let me tell you personally, you know, you went from Director of Community Corrections, Deputy Director, to the head man. And actually, I've seen the evolution of the position from corrections and jail management to actually de facto healthcare administrator. So I think I said you, you've left in good hands. And your mark will be left for a while. You know, in some sports, they distinguish the difference of a team and a program. A team is, you know, when most players, they join the team, and when they leave, they're never apart. But when you join a program, you know, where you can compare it like Nebraska football, Kentucky basketball, people stay with the program. So you develop the program, hope you stay with the program, and we have you accessible for the future. So I appreciate y'all, all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. With that, is there motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft, please vote.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
On? On corrections, or in general?
County governments.
We're going to say that now.
County governments.
We're going to say that now, in the next board meeting, I mean, next meeting. With, thank you. With that, roll call for the Board of Commissioners, please.
Commissioner Borgson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair?
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. We're going to take these separately. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 10th. Is there motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second, I mean, motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft, please vote.
One minute, please.
Yes.
We're going to try one more thing here, then we might have to do an old-school vote. We're going to do a voice vote on this. Sorry, guys, for the minutes. Commissioner Borgson? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, July 24th. Is there a motion to approve? There's a second. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft. Mr. Clerk, you want to make a comment on this?
Yes, I'll put the podium here.
Are you picking up in the mic?
How about that?
Spin.
Dan Esch, Douglas County Clerk. So when I was reviewing the list of payments being submitted for approval today, one jumped out at me, a $495 payment to Esch Construction Company. Turns out, the County Road Department bought some saw and blade training package from an Esch Construction Supply. And it's a company based out of St. Paul, Minnesota. I Googled them. And it turns out, their president also goes by the name of Dan Esch. So I called my dad last night, and I asked him, because on the company's history, it was started by Dan Esch's grandfather, Otto Esch. And so I called my dad last night, and I go, you know, growing up, did you know of any Otto Esch in Minnesota, or any relatives around St. Paul or Minnesota at all? And he goes, no, we, we had no relatives in that part of the country. So, anyway, as you all know, we definitely have constituents who watch who we're paying, you know. And this is, we did a, my accounts payable supervisor did like a history search. This is the first time we've ever paid this company anything. I don't know if it's the last or not, but I imagine if we pay them a few more times, eventually someone's going to start asking questions. So I just figured I'd address it now, that, yes, the president of Esch Construction implies Dan Esch, but it's not this Dan Esch, Douglas County Clerk. And I've never met him. And as far as I know, we're, we are not related. So just wanted to announce that.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to represent you for you. Change your name to Dan Schmietnopp.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mr. LaFong and Dan Schmietnopp.
I am going to be abstaining on check number 503911, which deals with the purchase of the OHA building. I think you're all aware of my longstanding objection to the amount and scope of this project. So on that particular check, I'll, I'll be abstaining.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining, even though the accountability and disclosure, I have the letter where they said it wasn't necessary because of a person and a company being involved. But I am going to abstain from voting on that also.
There's a motion and a second. Right?
I'm going to do a voice vote again.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, abstaining, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan, you're abstaining?
Abstaining.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Borgson. I apologize. Sorry, Commissioner Borgson. Motion passes with Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan abstaining.
Item two is consent agenda. There's 17 items. We need to remove items G and item M2.
Just a couple of questions.
Okay. Let me.
Yeah.
Ask, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
G2, item two, G is going to be forwarded to next week. That's not ready, so that's been scratched. That's why that's removed. Two, I need to abstain on. And with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda without G and item M2?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, it's a question on, let's see, where was this? Let's see, where'd we go? On item B2, I'm just curious, what, where did that money come from to remodel the bathrooms at the extension? And did Sarpy County participate? Does anybody know? Does, Mr. Carlson, do you know on that? If you don't, that's okay. But we have a joint operation in extension with Sarpy, and I just, and I'm also curious where the money came from?
Eric Carlson, Douglas County, purchasing. I am not, I'm knowledgeable of the budget source for that particular item.
That's fine. Thank you. That's, and then the only other thing I had was on, let's see, the, on Q.
Are we postponing that or holding that off? No, G.
No, that's, that's, yeah, G.
I have a question about the tower. Did we get any revenue from this? Is this on our property, or is this someplace else? The Verizon antennas that are being added. Do you know who owns that property? Is that, is that us or somebody else? Somebody else? Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'll let that go too, but I'll look into it.
Please, come on.
Come on down. Yeah. Do you know whose land that is? Is there any revenue?
Yes, that is on Dennis Dimitrop's property.
Okay, that's fine then.
And it is not a county tower.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Doug Cook, Douglas County Environmental Services.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you very much. That's all.
Okay, that, there's motion and a second. Mr. Clerk?
As for those watching, we are unable to adjust the agenda today. So if there's changes like this, we have to do a voice vote. So I apologize. So it's the consent agenda less. Items G and M2 is what we're voting on right now.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item M2, agreement with Charles Drew Community Health Center regarding the Omaha Healthy Start Program, poor referrals, is there a motion and a second?
Move for the approval.
Moved by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Borgerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Abstaining, I am a board member there. With that, let's go to item three, recognition and proclamations.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Rogers, we didn't take up item G, I don't believe.
Item G is going to be held over.
Oh, I apologize, thank you.
Item three is recognition and proclamations. Letter A, recognition of the following county employees retired. Colleen Brundy has retired from the Douglas County Health Center after 25, 29 years of service. Item B is the recognition of Mr. David Chamberlain, who has retired from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after 28 years. Neither one of them is here, but with that, I want to thank them for their service and their time with Douglas County and wish them well in their retirement. Commissioner Borgerson, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want, since everybody always does the bragging thing about prep, I want to brag about David Chamberlain, who was a student of Holy Cross and Gross High School, rah rah, go Cougars, and just shout out to him, thank you for his service.
There's a motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Redact Commissioner LaFong's comments.
We'll need to do, since we're taking up both items, we'll do a voice vote. Commissioner Borgerson? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
I'd just like to note, for the record, I have a sister that graduated from Omaha Gross. Go Cougars.
I went to Cathedral High School.
Let's bring it back. Item four, citizen's comments, is this an opportunity to, for citizens to comment on items related to the Board of Commissioners that are not officially listed on the agenda? Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Mrs. Thorne, can you hear me? LaVon Dennis Williams, 8919 North 56th Avenue Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here today to speak on a complaint I filed with the Commissioners regarding the use of profanity that Commissioner Rogers directed at me at a June 20th meeting that was called by the Crime Commission to address concerns that had arisen on a complaint regarding the recommendation that this one organization receive a majority of the community-based aid dollars. I'm also here to speak about the response I received as a result of that complaint. While it was my hope to resolve this matter between the Board and myself, it was the response that I received that compelled me to come before you today, because I did not want that response to be the final word on this matter. First of all, I want to very clear, I'm going to make it very clear, that there was not an exchange of animosity between myself and Commissioner Borgerson, excuse me, Commissioner Rogers, leading up to his use of profanity towards me. I want to also make it very clear that irrespective of what transpired, it's never acceptable from my standpoint for an elected official to curse at another member of the public based on something that person is saying, because they neither like, neither agree with, or don't like the tone of what was being said. The exchange between, the, the change that the investigator noted, that basically what she's implied, pretty much gave Commissioner Rogers an excuse to curse at me, was not an exchange, it was my responding to a question that Cynthia Kennedy had asked each of us in that meeting, which was Commissioner Borgerson, Commissioner Rogers, Patrick Bloomingdale, and Janay Pinkhook, to explain the ongoing conflict among the Operation Youth Success Board of Directors regarding community-based aid. I went first, and I explained what I felt was the concern that over the years, this body that's getting hundreds of thousands of dollars a year has not produced anything in terms of substantive reform for our juvenile justice system. I also then pointed out several examples that I felt where there was abuse of authority by the executive committee, and one of those examples was when a mother came before us and spoke about the dysfunction of the Board, the direction of the Operation Youth Success Board, and specifically targeted behavior by Commissioner Rogers. Carrie Peterson with the Sherwood Foundation left the meeting and went and reported that person's comments to that, to that mother's employer, whom the Sherwood Foundation was funding. I mentioned that in the meeting with Cynthia Kennedy. I also mentioned the issue with the, with Commissioner Rogers recommending that a majority of that unspent community-based aid go to one nonprofit at the expense of other nonprofits who could have applied for the money. It was when I finished candidly explaining my concerns and my deep frustration with the directors, the direction of Operation Youth Success, that Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Rogers said he wanted to go next, he wanted to respond to me. It is at that point that he made that statement to me, directing profanity directly at me. At no time were my comments ever directed at Commissioner Rogers, as the investigator states in her response to the commission. In fact, the person never even bothered to call me, and it's ironic that the person who files the complaint doesn't even get, doesn't even get interviewed by the investigator. But nonetheless, I am the only person at the table with this reform that's ever going on that is not getting paid. I am the only community voice, and yes, I am very frustrated by how this, I see the direction of this reform taking place, but at no time do I ever think it's acceptable for anyone to direct profanity at someone because they don't like what they're saying or the tone in which they're saying. My complaint was not that Commissioner Rogers was rude to me, or that he even used profanity. My complaint that he directly cursed at me. He said, people want you out the committee, but I've been protecting your ass, and that's not acceptable. That is what he said to me. And so for anyone to say that a critical, my being critical of this board warranted or justified his cursing at me, as that response, as that response implies, does a great disservice to this community, because I'm a community member, I'm here without a paycheck, I'm here because I'm concerned about those kids. You all just heard almost over an hour of testimony from Director Foxxaw. I'm here because when we don't get it right with these juveniles, Director Foxxaw is the person who then deals with them next. I'm here to stop that flaw. And so for him to curse at me was unacceptable, what was even more unacceptable and was just as hurting was for that, whoever did that investigation to send me a letter and somehow excusing Commissioner Rogers' comments at me based on the fact that somehow I provoked him? And it's very disappointing if anybody in that meeting relayed anything other than what happened. At no time was my comments directed at Commissioner Rogers, I was answering Cynthia Kennedy. And so I did not want that response to be the last word on this. I also do not want us to set precedent that it's okay for an elected official to curse at a member of the public, because they neither agree with nor like or like the tone in which that person is speaking. So I thank you for your time and the opportunity to come before you. I hope that this conversation will lead to you all sponsoring an agenda item where you all start taking a critical look at the direction of Operation Youth Success. That public-private partnership is not working, the Attorney General has concluded several times, they have absolutely no authority over that body, regardless of whether open meeting laws are violated, or things are kept off the agenda, or the public is kept out by some of the actions that are taking place because of that public-private nature. And I ask that if anything comes from this incident where Commissioner Rogers cursed at me, that the outcome be that you all would take a hard look at that Operation Youth Success initiative. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Senator, I better jump up before they call in the end of the meeting. It's hard to stay awake with all this civility and the quietness of the discussions today, and I apologize for jumping up, but I wasn't quite sure if he was ready to close down for the day. It seems like you're not the only person around here that has experienced certain things. You know, you're on a forum here that talks about, this is the opportunity for members to be heard for a maximum of five minutes. Some get by with more than five, by the way. A little confusing, I guess I'm not supposed to be talking about topics that are on the agenda. Larry Store, S-T-O-R-E-R.
Thank you, Larry.
Omaha.
Right.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
But it does say that I can talk about topics unrelated to the agenda. I don't, that's kind of confusing, but anyway, back in the old days, the king's minions sometimes got run out of town, tarred and feathered, run out of town on a rail, because the citizens were tired of being overtaxed, or being tired to do, told to do this, or hired to do that, or ordered to do that, and they said, that's it, that guy's out of here. Well, the king couldn't control all that, so he decided he was going to maybe send the armed forces over here. And we began declaring certain acts as not tolerable, stamp tax acts, et cetera. And in the declaration, they talk about all these programs, 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 that the king was forcing on us. And here today, I'm looking at all these programs, programs, programs. You're talking about programs, programs, programs. Well, one program, for example, juvenile justice. Lots of programs there, but are they social programs or are they social justice programs? We hire people and pay them money from out of state to come in and study our juveniles, since we have them incarcerated, we could do that, you know? And because it's a partnership or a foundation, nobody has any control over it, and it's a matter of privacy. The privacy laws, oh, we can't tell you who we interviewed, we can't tell you whose data we collected, but it was your sons and daughters that were gathering this information on. And then we're going to come up here and say, we have a problem with disparity, there's too many Hispanics, too many blacks that have been suspended from school, that are in our juvenile detention center for observation. We're going to observe them? And then we're going to say, what agency we're going to send them to for evaluation? Or we're going to hire somebody to evaluate them? I don't think the taxpayers want to pay for that. You mentioned the building earlier that was valued at $7. Why the hell are we not going after that building? Instead of how many millions of dollars to get one across the street here? We can build skywalks, we can build tunnels. Why is that not part of the deal? Why do you confiscate somebody else's, tear down another nice building? I remember when you blew up the Omaha waterfront down there, I had a new camera that took sequential pictures of the destruction. Clouds of dust and bricks flying everywhere. It's time to stop that business. Use what you got, but don't take it away from people.
Jim Kavanaugh, I wanted to comment on one of the previous speakers, but was informed by the chair that we're not allowed to comment, so it's an open comment area now, I guess I'll appear as a citizen and comment on it that way. Ms. Dennis, who spoke to us before, raised a couple of points that I think are going to come up again and again as we proceed into public-private partnerships, and those points relate to the public records and the access to public records that are kept on these partnerships, or the lack thereof. The point that she raised regarding her tay-to-tay with Commissioner Rogers is lacking in any record to show that this side or that side may have been in a position to say this or that. The problem with that is then we're left with what they used to call in the law, a he-said, she-said situation. She says one thing, and I think Ms. Carlson from our staff investigated, and other people had other interpretations of it, and without a transcript, like there would be on this meeting or our committee meetings, you know, you're kind of left in a position of who said what, he said, she said. That's not good enough for public transactions, and I think that we should be sensitive to that going forward, because as you know from our discussion a couple of weeks ago relative to the Juvenile Justice Center discussion, that entire organization is being set up so that there will be no public records or public access to those records. And that's a real concern. I mean, this is a concern because we've got a private individual saying they were cursed at by a public individual. That's going to be a concern because it's proposing to spend $120 million plus of public monies without any access to that. This is a real big thing, and I think that we should look into requiring all of the meetings that we participate in funding to require records. If we're going to use public money to do stuff, we should have public access and public records to those activities. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Gail Lowkey, and I live at 4118 North 78th Street in Omaha. The reason I'm here is because I'd like to address the project that is proposed for the criminal, the Juvenile Justice Center. One thing that I've heard in sitting in this meeting is the talk of a lot of money, you're talking about millions of dollars. I think somebody made the comment, well, $50,000, it's a small piece of the budget. $50,000 is more than I make in a year of working. I am of Social Security age, I'm a full-time employee, and I make less than $50,000 a year. So to hear my public officials talking about what a small drop in the bucket that is, is kind of a stab at my heart, when that's more than I make in an entire year, although I work full-time. I have emailed the, everybody on the board, and I want to thank Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Kavanaugh for responding to me. Unfortunately, the person that represents me in my district didn't take the time or energy to do so, and I find that rather disturbing. In summary, my feelings about the Board's decision to use eminent domain to destroy a historic building is that it is expensive for the taxpayers, it's going to cause a tax hike, which many of us cannot afford, that it is completely squashing an emerging private developing neighborhood, and it should not be managed by a tax-free foundation. I totally agree with Commissioner Kavanaugh, if you are spending public money, there needs to be public records available. And I would assume that there have been some type of studies done on why that was selected, but I don't think there's any public access to those studies, and I don't understand why. As far as the parking garage that is proposed, I guess my question would be, what benefit is that to the public? If you're going to spend public funds, the public should have some benefit, and my guess is they won't even have access to park there. So I urge you to reconsider, I think you're squandering taxpayers' money, and I do not support your decision, and I think you need to get the input of the people, and I think you need to bring it to a bout. Thank you.
Members of the Board, my name is Ernie Chambers, I represent the 11th Legislative District in Omaha. I do not intrude into the affairs of other governing bodies. I come only when I think something has happened which is greatly out of the ordinary. I felt my presence here this morning was extremely important. When I give my word, I keep it. I had no idea that what happened this morning in the military, it would be called attrition, you take a long time and delay and delay and delay. I had intended to come down here today... I had intended to come down here today, but having no idea it would go on this long before this serious issue could be discussed. I had a call from the New York Times yesterday, but I was busy. We're out of session. I go to legislature every day, even though we're out of session. My salary per month, after taxes and Social Security, is $841 a month. My hourly wage as a member of the state legislature is $5.76. I take my job very seriously. My word means something to me. I told the man from the New York Times to call me at my office at 11 o'clock today, and I would be there. I didn't bother to get his phone number. I'm sure I can find it. But in keeping my obligation self-imposed to be here, I broke my word that I gave to somebody yesterday. I do not see how what happened with Ms. Dennis Williams can be dealt with in such a casual, ho-hum fashion. I want this board and everybody to know, who hears my voice or reads what I've said, that when a person, especially a black woman, is advocating for our community, she is not alone. And if there's not another black man in this town, state, or country who will stand with a black woman who has been wrong, there is one. And some people have said, "You see, I'm 81 years old. It's too bad I could not be divided in two, and there'd be two black men, each of 41 years of age." I am unaware of the protocol of the Douglas County Board. I don't know if you record and transcribe proceedings at your meetings. I wanted something that I had to say on this to be made a matter of record. I do not throw a rock and hide my hands. I do not hide behind women's skirts. I do not bully women. I do not bully weak, frightened people. I don't know if the statement that I made for the county board members will be a matter of record in this proceeding today. Will that be the case? If not, may I offer it?
Certainly, you can offer it, yes. I take a copy of that. Dan Ash, County Clerk. This will be a part of the record. We do record the meetings, and we do transcript, we do minutes, but we will transcribe portions of a meeting, word for word, when requested. So I can, we can do that. Yes. Yeah, it's televised, recorded, we have a video recording of it. But like I said, if you wanted a written transcription of everything, we could do that for you.
Well, see, the legislature records and transcribes everything for the legislative history. I don't know how it's done here. And I wasn't saying do it just for me, but I want to be sure that what I say is a matter of record. I don't know your protocol. How much time is a person given to speak? Five minutes? Had I known it, I wouldn't have spoken as long as I did, but since I didn't know, I'm gonna take just a few minutes, if you will grant me that privilege. I see nods, so I'll take it as a yes. So I'm going to read this statement. "To members of the Douglas County Board regarding formal complaint of Ms. Levon Dennis Williams against Douglas County Commissioner Chris Rogers for directing a vulgarity at her during a meeting, June 21, 2018. To establish my," I use a Latin term, but I'm going to say it in English. "To establish my good faith in this matter, I am sharing here with three newspaper items detailing my quote 'connection,' unquote, to the board, some of whose members I work with, and legislative action I have taken to benefit the city of Omaha as a whole, and specifically, North and South Omaha." You can read what I attached. "Commissioner Rogers has been involved with distributing grant funds, parentheses, turn-back tax money from the state, close parenthesis, which he would be in no position to do were it not for my legislative work. His having directed a vulgarity at Ms. Dennis Williams is totally indefensible, inexcusable, and bespeaks the attitude of a back-alley thuggish bully. It not only insulted and demeaned Ms. Dennis Williams, it brought disrepute to his office and violated his fiduciary duty to the public as an elected official. I take very seriously the oath of office I took to be a member of the legislature. I don't swear, but the Constitution recognizes an affirmation, and I affirmed that I would discharge the duties of that office to the best of my ability, and my word means something, and that's what I do, and that's why I'm here today. Not because I'm paid, not because anybody makes me, but because of the standard I imposed on myself as an elected official who told the people who voted for me, and those who I am to serve as a member of the legislature, which would be everybody in this state. My title is state senator. I'm elected by a district, but I represent everybody in this state. And if I were to give something like a catalog of how I operate, the wealthy don't need me, the powerful don't need me, the least, the last, and the lost. And I'm aware how much hostility there is toward me, how much resentment there is when I speak, but I will speak my mind wherever and whenever I think that I should." I wish, do you all take an oath of office? Okay. I wish Senator Ro, excuse me, Commissioner Rogers took his oath seriously. He should have manned up and apologized. He should not have said what he said. I have been in public office 42 years in the legislature, and four years as a member of the learning community. I have been in some very contentious exchanges, on the floor of the legislature, in committee hearings, and never in that nearly half a century have I directed profanity, obscenity, vulgarity at anybody. And if I had, it would have made news. Not other people doing it makes news. I regret that a black man would show disrespect like this for a black woman. A comment like that would never have been directed at a white woman. But if it had, it would not have been dealt with by members of this board in a ho-hum, so-what fashion. I'm gonna wrap this up now. "The county board, in my opinion, should officially distance itself from Commissioner Rogers' ethical slash professional misconduct, or accept condemnation for being complicit after the fact. As a citizen, an elected official, and a man, in all caps, I'm compelled to go on record. And for black people, black males, being a man is extremely important, and that's why I will go alone, where I feel the position of black people should be made known. I don't bite my tongue on the floor of the legislature. I won't bite my tongue when dealing with the police. I conducted a one-man picket at the police station. I went to the lion's den, because they gave an award, a valor, to two big cops above six foot tall who killed a young black man. They honored him. And I thought of it as a Ku Klux Klan meeting, but I didn't hide behind anybody's skirts. I was down there in front of the police department with my sign saying, 'Killing is not valorous and never should have been rewarded.'" I have conducted one-person protests in front of the courthouse. On one of them, Sheriff Dunning had made a joke about it. He was a member of a committee comprising members of the legislature, I guess, police officers and others, and he was apologizing for having missed the meeting. And jokingly, he said, "I knew that Senator Chambers was going to come and protest in front of the courthouse, and on the good chance that he might be arrested, I wanted to observe it and not miss it." That is Sheriff Dunning, a white sheriff, the top law enforcement county person. I deal with that. I know what I'm confronting, and I don't run. I don't hide. I don't need a lot of company along with me. I sat through all that Dr. Foxall said. It's my opinion that such a long presentation does not ordinarily occur. Having been in the legislature all the decades that I have been, when we get reports from various agencies, various individuals from the courts on down, those reports are given to us, and we don't have somebody come and read the report to us, because we can read. If there are specific matters we have questions about, we let the person know, we would like that to be presented to us. We don't bring them before us and have that person read, and then we ask questions which anybody who can read can get." I see y'all getting nervous, and before somebody has to say something, and I do play by the rules, I'm going to stop, but I will say this. I am not a hard man to find. Anybody who wants to take issue with what I've said in any kind of way, I'm not hard to find, and here's how I'm going to close it. Sugar Ray Robinson was a middleweight boxer. They said best pound-for-pound, meaning that if you added more weight to him, and he was in a bigger class, he'd still be the best in the world. Floyd Patterson was the heavyweight champion, and they were trying to get a fight between Floyd Patterson and Sugar Ray Robinson, and Sugar Ray Robinson said, "I'm a middleweight, and he's a heavyweight, and you think I'm going to fight him?" And then they started talking about the millions of dollars. And you know what? By comparison, little Sugar Ray Robinson said about Floyd Patterson, "The more you talk to me, the more he looks like Tom Thumb." In other words, size means nothing to me. Nothing. And I'm not one of these people you can holler at, or curse at, or threaten, and I'll run. If you say you're gonna do something to me, don't say it. Do it, or try to do it. Let the chips lie where they fall, and let the consequences be borne by the one who decides to do that. Thank you, members.
My name is Rachel Pinkerton. I live at 5832 Corby Street. Vulgarity aside, let's look at what Commissioner Rogers told Levon Dennis Williams on June 21st in a closed meeting. In essence, as I understand it, he told her he considered himself an ally. Crudely, he told her she's not welcome at Operation Youth Success. Huh, why would that be? One reason: she speaks truth. Several years ago, when I first observed an Operation Youth Success committee meeting, I didn't know anything about Levon Dennis Williams, not even her name. I came at the request of Laura McCormick, who was concerned about the quality of stakeholder engagement at OYS. It struck me then, and in subsequent meetings, that Ms. Dennis Williams' voice was uniquely valuable. The quality of the information and the vision that she brings to the discussion is unmatched. I think Operation Youth Success's inability to benefit from the expertise and the insights Ms. Dennis Williams brings to juvenile justice reform demonstrates that this is a failed effort. Time to shut it down. I was present at the June 21st Operation Youth Success public meeting. Commissioner Rogers was visibly upset by thoughtful, uncomfortable questions raised by Ms. Dennis Williams. I was so shocked by his scowls, I repeatedly nudged my neighbor and said, "Look at his Ms. Dennis Williams expressed no emotion, just urgent concern that efforts be effective so that the most at-risk youth can be helped. Commissioner Rogers' frustration is a symptom, it seems to me, of a broken system. I urge the board to make the most of this evidence of dysfunction in OYS. Thank you.
Brian Smith, 6516 Emmett Street. I am here to make a formal request that the commissioners withdraw their support for the proposed Juvenile Justice Center and the move towards eminent domain, minus Mr. Kavanagh, who has already stated his opposition to this process. As public awareness grows, and as the media continues to cover this particular situation, the people of Douglas County are becoming discontented with the process in which this has unfolded. We are discontented with the location, and also with the proposed costs. The DLR report specifically dissuades the commission from using this location. It recommends significant resident engagement, which we have not had, and it also lists out 48 beds with a maximum capacity of 64 people. For the last four years, the average daily population at the Youth Corrections Center has been 77 people. I contacted the DCYC Superintendent Alexander and asked, "What happens to that overflow population?" He said, "We will investigate, sending them to other juvenile facilities in other counties." By proceeding with this particular proposed building process, you are setting out to fail our children. You are setting out to immediately build a facility that does not meet the current needs of the DCYC, and will send our children to other counties. That is unconscionable. I would also like to point out that the media and public reports, they're very concerned with the efforts to proceed with such haste, and without any public engagement. I would think that after HDR in Omaha Performing Arts had such a difficult scenario, or difficult public process with this, that maybe they wouldn't proceed so quickly with this particular building as well. The facility is too small. $120 million, I don't believe is warranted, and has been supported by the studies and the information released in public record. Also, a 501(c)(3) to avoid public, open meeting records to manage this process out of sight of the public, I believe, is also negligent on the part of the public, I believe, is also negligent on the part of the board as well as the planning board, and I appreciate you listening to the comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item six, public hearings. What we'll do, Doug, is take a public hearing on item A, B, C together, and we'll vote on them individually. So if you want to come down and go. Item A is a farmstead lot split application for preliminary platform Frank A. and Carolyn M. Vinsel. And item B is a farmland lot split application for the final platform Frank A. and Carol M. Vinsel. Item C, rezoning request application for Frank A. and Carolyn M. Vinsel. So what we'll do is open the public hearing on items A, B, and C.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I did not mean to...
Yep.
Just need to get my presentation to show on the board here. Okay, can the board see?
There we go.
Oh, he just gave us some great ideas.
Okay, so the planning commission met on June 13th, and we had five of nine members present. So, as the chair mentioned, all three of these items pertain to the same property. So this first item is a farmstead lot split. It's your typical farmstead lot split. It's to split off about five and a half acres, which includes the existing house, a barn, some historic barns, and separate them from the surrounding farm ground. So as you see here on the picture in front of you, this is a very large L-shaped parcel. The property in question is this little corner right here. This is 264th Street. We're all familiar with 264th Street, just a mile north on Center Street. We've had discussion on Two Rivers Storage. Travis Harlow's restaurant and convenience store is right across the way. So we're a mile south of that. 264th Street is paved. F Street, which forms the northern boundary, is gravel. We always start with the comprehensive plan. This very colorful map is that. My cursor is showing where the property is here. The light blue or the bluish stands for resource extraction. The, kind of the darker blue over here, this is public because as you proceed west on F Street, of course, you get to Two Rivers State Recreation Area, and also MUD has their wellfields here south. This is the zoning map of the property. As you would suspect, the entire property is zoned ag. You'll see that there are scattered parcels of kind of this grayish area or brownish area, which is RR2. So if I flip you around a little bit here, 264th Street is on the bottom. The reason I have this slide in here is I wanted you to see that the five-and-a-half-acre parcel does include all the buildings and also that portion of the creek. You're still flipped around here, so over here on the F Street side, they are dedicating the full 50 feet. They just had a few extra feet to dedicate along 264th, to get to the 50-foot right-of-way, which is what the county engineer recommends. Some pictures of the property, the existing house, 264th Street, our wonderful planning and zoning signs there, the old barns, the old barns again, the old barns again. Oh, I wanted to go back. This little thing right here in the middle is not a UFO. That's a bird. I worry about that. And that's all I had. So on the planning commission, on this first agenda item of the preliminary plat recommended, unanimous approval, five to nothing, as you concur with that recommendation.
This is a public hearing for all three items. Are there anybody that wants to comment on items A, B, or C during this public hearing?
May I ask Doug a question?
Please do.
Doug, you said the planning board unanimously supported the first of the three. Did they? Was that true of all three?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
Again, are there any public comments on these three items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Let's take them one at a time. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borges, and to approve item A. Roll call, please.
Actually, we can...
Okay, all right, then, go for it. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. All other commissioners voting yes.
Is there a motion to approve item B? Motion by Commissioner Borges and second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. All other commissioners voting yes.
Is there a motion to approve item C? Motion by Commissioner Borges and second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. All other commissioners voting yes.
Item seven, committee discussion and actions. Thanks, Doug. Letter A, finance. Item one, budget report. Commissioners Boyle and Morgan.
As presented, I don't think there's anything, Joe, is there?
No. I'd like to mention just a couple of things. This is no surprise to...
Mr. Morgan, although he looks surprised. I've talked with Commissioner LaFong a couple of times about the election commissioner's office. You know, we need to get that on the radar. I don't know what we're going to be deciding about that, but I know the election's coming up, so we can't do anything before that. But I do want to get it on the radar, and I looked at another building that really is incredible and may offer us some other alternatives. We need to get it talked about. And the other is mental health. We've got some things operating on that, and I'm not sure, but we really need to come to grips with it. The other thing I did is that I told the mayor and Ben Gray and her chief of staff, Marty Bealik, that I would like to propose that the new internet tax that would be placed on those kind of sales, that Douglas County get a share of it. The city is flush with money. That's pretty obvious. They have a billion-dollar budget now, and they have 30 or 60 million, whatever it is, coming from the restaurant. And we need to do something to pay for what we, our services, that doesn't involve property taxes. So I did send her a notice that was interested in it, and that we need to deal with people who are in corrections and also on the street, mental illness, and we need the money. So I think it's time for us to go to the mat and see what we can do. Okay? So I just want to tell you what I was up to while you were all talking about other stuff.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just on that last point, Commissioner Boyle, you bring up a great point. We addressed this at the last Board of Trustees at Douglas County Health Center. I don't know if the public's aware of this, but we drilled down on this with our director, how many long-term psychiatric beds there are in Douglas County. That number is zero. Zero. Now, if there's somebody who's going to have long-term psychiatric hospitalization issues, they can't be treated in Douglas County. That's a scandal and a crisis. And I know that you're working hard on this, and I appreciate your efforts on this.
Thanks. We're also working with CHI to talk to them about what they need to do on that subject.
Thank you. Item B, administrative services committee. Item one, approval of the annual GIS center local with MAPPA. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, you have the document in your materials on moment numeral 7B1. This is simply a renewal of the longstanding contractual relationship that we've enjoyed with MAPPA. It's pretty self-explanatory, and they pay us to do some services. We do have Mr. Shunlo, the GIS director, here with us if you have any questions, but I think that all of you have been here a lot longer than I have and seen this before. It's just a renewal of what we've been doing for some time. I've moved for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes. All present voting yes.
Item D, community services. Commissioner Craft, you want to comment?
Yes. The county fair was held, and it was at Chance Ridge. Commissioners Duda and Morgan both joined us in the parade. It was very well-attended, and I think we had a good success. Many displays, a lot of enthusiasm, and I think we're on the path to future success also.
And Village Point.
And Village Point, yes.
A lot of festivities were at Village Point. It would seem to be a very good fit.
Right. And we need to thank Village Point, Chance Ridge, and Metro Community College for their help in making this a success. I did not visit the animal displays and participation at Chance Ridge. I believe Commissioner Duda did.
I had to go out for the goat judging. It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E...
Hold on, hold on.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just may, we may want to do a resolution thanking all of them so that next year, as we start to plan, they're feeling the love.
We plan on that.
Good.
Item E is criminal justice committee. Note the July 10, 2018 minutes. Okay, with that...
I have one more thing, I'm sorry. Under these committees, I just forgot to mention it. The administrative services committee, as you all know, is meeting upstairs at 1:00 PM. The location has been changed from the ninth floor to the third floor. This is dealing with Douglas County Youth Center space needs, public property update, and juvenile justice center strategic planning. Also, yet to appear, but scheduled today, is a week from tomorrow, a hearing in this chamber of the administrative services committee, dealing with the Douglas County Separate Juvenile Court, space needs, and the juvenile justice center strategic planning. That'll be here Wednesday, August 1st at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, I'm really glad to hear you say that it's going to be here. Will that be televised? Would you consider moving it to the county board so it could be televised and we could, you know, have much more participation?
You make a good point, and I'll look into that. I don't know, but yeah, I think they're set up for it, and whether or not we can get the networks to pick it up. But thank you.
Well, I think if you put it, if you add it to a county board meeting, it's done, and, you know, hopefully we can...
I believe if you, you know, you track this, we've had the hearing with the county attorney and the public defender, and now we're having the hearing with the youth center, and we're having the hearing next with the courts. Once those three big parts of this project are heard and on record of what they have and what they need, I hope to bring, as Commissioner Morgan and you have suggested, the entire alternative to the board, and that would be subsequent to the August 1st court meeting.
That'd be terrific.
But you're exactly right, and I want to thank you both for, you know, urging me to do this. It's just a matter of, you know, we're putting the building blocks in, and today at 1:00 is another building block.
Well, and I thought, we talked, we had lunch yesterday, and I am unable to make it, I planned on going, but I have a client in town unexpectedly. But I do want to thank you for, and I think it's a great contribution to have this in public, and your proposal, I'm really interested in seeing that we did discuss, but I think it's important that you bring it forward, and in a public forum like this, it's terrific. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I mean, we're doing this, you know, in limited resources, and time is a question, so we're doing it as well as we can, as fast as we can.
Thanks. Commissioner Morgan.
Maybe request that, you know, we maybe make some items lighter the agenda so that we have the time for the good discussion of this. Because I've been one encouraging as far as any options to be right here also.
I think that's a great idea, and I know from my discussions with Commissioner Boyle that he's interested in maybe dedicating additional resources to this so that we can have the final product.
Right. When I spoke to Jim yesterday, we talked about possible, I mean, he's doing this without any support from the county, and of course, we've done quite a few things with support from the building commission and the county. One of the things we talked about was coming up, and I think it is very doable, and I would make a formal request. We talked about an amount of money that would help Commissioner Kavanaugh do this and make this presentation, which we asked him to do, and the amount of money is $20,000. And I'd like to make that sometime in the very near future, put it on the agenda, and discuss it, and because I think he is serious about this, and I think he needs some resources, which certainly are modest, to get some people to take a look at what his alternative is and make a presentation. So I will ask Mr. Lorenz what the best way is to get that on the agenda, and we can discuss that. So I appreciate that. It was a good meeting with Mr. Kavanaugh yesterday.
Item G is human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service, which is as submitted. Item two is legislative items, which there are none. Item A, other legislative issues. Last meeting, I asked everybody to, we transferred up to 9:03 to solidify with Karen your availability, so we're going to set September 27th as that date with the legislators we talked about here to do corrections and the health center, Medicaid specifically. So if you want to hold it, September 27th.
I just wanted to ask, is there any time to be, for the senators to do something social, like a tour of the zoo or something like that, and maybe a meal there? And particularly, are we inviting their spouses or significant other to be here?
From what we talked about, that's where we are. I think we're talking about going from about 10 to 2:03 to have both topics, and then give some time to do something.
Okay. Well, I'd be glad to help if I could, I can, I don't know if the mayors were happy with me after a...
September 27th.
Anyway...
We'll talk to Sean about planning.
Okay, if I can help, let me know.
Please, I will.
Thanks.
So again, September 27th, we're talking about for that date.
Thanks, that's great. Thanks for arranging that.
And that's here?
Here somewhere. It most likely will be down at the jail.
Like 10 to 3, did you say?
That's what we're looking at. So if we want to block that out, it could be, it definitely could be tighter, but 10 to 3 is the block, and it could end up like 11 to 2. But hold 10 to 3.
Excuse me, Ms. Roger. The corrections has a, what do they have, an event here on the 27th in the legislative chamber at 1:00? Isn't there some graduation?
No, that's August.
What?
Not September 27th.
That's July.
Oh, okay, okay, this is August.
This is September.
August 27th.
September.
September, oh, okay. You have to send me an email, Commissioner LaFong.
You will.
It's on your calendar.
I'm sure it is.
You will. All right. With that, we do have a need for executive session for personnel, litigation, and real estate.
Motion to approve.
So motion approved by Commissioner Boyle? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Is there a...
Still need a second.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda.
LaFong.
And we're up to do a voice vote. Apparently my mic's not working either, so. Great day here. Commissioner Borges?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. And again, we're going to executive session for personnel litigation and real estate.
I think I need shock treatments or something, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure you can.
They're not, they're not, they act as we use them as part of the habit.